Y'all ready down there? You good, okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. If I could have your attention, we'll get our meeting called to order. It's good to see all of you on this Tuesday evening. We had to change our normal meeting date from yesterday to today due to some conflicts with schedule and travel and that kind of thing. So, thank you for accommodating that for us. I do want to remind you that tonight, we've got a council workshop, which is what we'll start with. And during the council workshop, we'll basically be discussing items, not voting on items. But then immediately following the workshop, we'll go into a special called meeting because we do have some items we need to vote on that are time-sensitive. We have agendas here on the podium, so if you'd like to grab one and follow along with us, you're certainly welcome to. We are called to order. The only thing that we'll be voting on during the council workshop is the agenda. So, gentlemen, you have that agenda presented to you, so I'll take a motion for either acceptance or to make any changes.
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that does carry. We do have some presentations tonight, so I am going to ask... Our first presentation is about the Go Light Up Your World Day. So, if you'll meet me down front here, I will read the presentation and get that presented to you, because we really appreciate the work that y'all do for that. And just want to let you know, the reason we have this camera here is because watching for kind of on our YouTube channel. So, I have... It does have to be one of them. And I'll present the presentation and the proclamation, and then if you want to just tell people what Go Light Up Your World Day is and encourage people to attend. I know the city always does, and we're proud to do that. But our proclamation recognizes October 16th as Go Light Up Your World Day, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas, a nonprofit collaborative, the Tiff County Commission on Children and Youth," better known as TC3Y, "shares the Georgia Family Connections' focus of improving conditions for children, families, and communities by serving the local decision-making body and bringing community partners together to develop, implement, and evaluate plans that address the serious challenges facing Georgia's children and families. And by working closely with various community partners, TC3Y is able to foster local relationships, increase policymakers' awareness of local issues, and put into proven action practices and leverage additional funding to support the community plan for Tiff County. And having luminaries lit throughout the county at the same time with the same mission of joining together for our children's best interest, while envisioning that anywhere you go in Tiff County, you will see the light and recognize how unified we are as a community in our efforts to ensure that children have a safe and caring environment, is the vision of this community-wide event. And whereas, by working together with faith-based organizations and community agencies, clubs, businesses, and individuals on this specific day, TC3Y strives to keep the youth of Tiff County safe and out of gangs by offering alternative positive activities, with hopes that throughout the year and especially on this day, our community will provide encouraging, constructive programs for our youth that encourage involvement in positive activities." Now, therefore, I, Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of the Tifton City Council, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2024, as Go Light Up Your World Day for the City of Tifton, and I encourage all fellow citizens to join me in working with the Tiff County Commission on Children and Youth as we strive to provide the best community and environment for the children, youth, and families of Tiff County. I have signed it today. Jessica White, our city clerk, has signed it. It does have our city seal, so it is official. So, I will present this to you, and if you'll just share with everyone how they can participate in Go Light Up Your World Day.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Julie. You said it all, but if anyone would like to join us on October 16th, Wednesday night, starting at 6:00, we're going to be lighting the luminaries. If you're interested, we have community members that come, have it in their yards. We have local organizations that join us. Please reach out to us. My phone number is 388-1000. Easy to remember. And I'm located on Ridge Avenue. We have the luminaries. We have everything you need to be able to just pick up signs, everything. You don't have to buy anything. So, and we would really appreciate your participation. Thank you so much.
And again, thank you so much for all that you do. It is... We're honored to be able to be a part of this with your organization. Okay. Our next presentation is someone who's very... For someone who's very special to this community, who has been with the City of Tifton for a long, long time. She used to be my neighbor. Quick funny story I got to tell about Donna Pate, who's been with the city for 40-plus years. When I moved next door to Donna, 110 years ago, it seems like now, with all of our kids and all of her kids next door, one day, her daughter comes and knocks on the door, and introduces herself and wants to know if I have any children. I said, "I do, but they're not here right now." So, I go out and work in the yard, and she runs back to her house, and I keep hearing somebody say, "Hey, what you doing?" And I was out raking in my yard. And I turn around and look towards Donna's house, and I didn't see anybody. I go back to raking. "Hey, what you doing?" And the voice sounded just like Jessica, her daughter, that had just come over, and I thought, "She is playing a prank on me." So, I'm raking, and I'm looking. I don't see anybody. And then, "Hey, what you..." And I just went inside. I was like, "I don't know who is pranking me, but somebody's pranking..." Well, Jessica came over when she saw the kids over, and she said, "Hey, I see your kids are here." She said, "I hope my parrot on the porch wasn't bothering you. We put him outside when he gets talking." It was a dadgum parrot. So, every time I see Donna, I just want to say, "Hey, what you doing?" But it was their parrot. But she was a great neighbor. She and Johnny both were wonderful neighbors, and we had good times over on Davis. But Donna has been with the city for 43 years. She has dedicated so much of her time, her energy, her expertise, her vision, to making sure that public works is handled no matter what. She didn't start in public works, though she started in September of 1981. She must have been 10. In the bookkeeping department, where she set up and ran the City of Tifton's first mainframe computer. Was it as big as this room? Back then, they were huge. Exactly. Exactly. It was huge, yeah. So, but she ran that. She took on that responsibility. She remained with finance until 2001, and then Donna transferred to the utilities department at that time, where she worked with water, sewer, and gas departments. She transitioned to the gas department supervisor in 2006, where she has held that position to this day. She has worked for the City of Tifton for 33 years and ESG for 10 years, but we're all family, so we're calling it 43 years altogether. So, Donna, thank you so much for your service to this community. I'm going to turn it over to Adam Cobb with ESG. He's got a little something, something for you, just a small token of all of our appreciation for all the work that you've done. So, Adam?
Thank you. Not very good with words, but Donna and I have been through a lot. She kind of raised me. She kind of clipped my wings and stuff like that. So, let's see, we've swapped offices a couple of times. Countless hours, days, months, working on special projects, nights. You know, we do with... That's right. We've fought, we've cried, we've hugged, we've done all the things. She truly is like another mom to all the guys that she works with and has been around her. We've seen a lot come, we've seen a lot go, but honestly, I've never seen any one person have people come back as much to see her as Ms. Donna. We have people come in all the time that just would say, "I want to go see Ma. I want to see what Ma's doing," or whatever. So, just want to thank you for your service, and I have a nice little plaque to give you for commemorating that. And we're going to take you out to eat this week. You'll probably get quite a few meals the rest of this week, but we want to just thank you for all the time that you spent keeping us corrected, because I think that's the best way to put it.
It will not be the same once you officially retire.
I'm going wherever.
Yeah, we do. You can run, but you can't hide. But we do honestly, we sincerely thank you for all your years of service, and thank your family for sharing you with us.
Honestly, it does not sound like a lifetime that it's been.
Yeah.
But I can't say that I haven't worked with a woman for years.
Yep.
I remember it, but I'm going to live on the chase of some more drank.
There you go. Well, that'll be fun, too. But thank you. We do appreciate you. All right. Our next item on our agenda, I'm going to call on our friend from Ryland, Mr. Aaron Sowa. He's the Division Manager for Ryland Environmental, and they have been very, very, very busy. And Aaron wanted to come and just kind of update the community and the city on everything that's going on with the cleanup efforts. And I can tell you, he was, as soon as the wind stopped and the rain stopped, where he could get out, he and his family came to Tifton and started working with ESG and volunteered time, brought equipment, have just gone above and beyond. So, this update on everything that's going on, Aaron, is greatly appreciated. So, I'll turn it over to you to present that information.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor. I appreciate you having me. I want to say something quick before we get into the presentation. From environmental, I'd like to thank the city's attention and its ability to help in cleanup efforts. ESG and ground have been on the ground, taking roads, supplies, and so on. This has helped, this has helped, has put cleanup efforts to test most municipalities in South Florida. As I come from South Florida, I'm in a three major hurricane that we're close to.
The officials in South Florida can attest to the way the city has handled the pre- and post-storm mitigation. It's top-notch. The city leaders, ESG, fire, police, and utility workers were in place and have fast-tracked recovery efforts as good as if not better than cities that have this kind of destruction on a regular basis. Ryland, Bar Mel, and I are proud to serve and be of service in this great community. Updates. We are on schedule on residential curbside garbage pickup. Front load route services are on schedule and back to normal. Most amounts of the municipal solid waste is back to normal levels than that previous three days post-hurricane. Brush routes. We're running three gravel trucks six days a week and will continue to do so till we're back to normal. We've completed our first pass on Monday's route. Monday's route on the north side was the heaviest-hit area, so cleanups took longer in that area. We are currently working on Tuesday's route and into Wednesday, so one of my trucks has already moved into Wednesday. I believe we'll be through all four routes within the next week. And the current plan is to make one pass on a street. Once it's cleared, we'll move to the next. When we have made our first pass of your area, we have completed all routes. We will be then starting the process all over again, so if you were unable to get your trees out to the curb in the time that we came down your road, I wanted to reassure you that we will be coming back through on our second pass. The city in Ryland would like you to make your best efforts to have your tree derberts threes out to curb as soon as possible. Thank you for your support and patience as we work through the recovery process.
All right. We'll see if this fancy new system works.
It was working a minute ago.
Oh, you can go ahead and click through. I'll speak on each one as we go through. Current roads that are still currently impassable, Wilson Lane between 20th and 22nd, Murray Lane between 20th and 22nd, Clyde Lane from Park to 18th.
Hang on one second, Aaron. We're having... Close out what? Jonathan?
Do windows turn off or not?
Oh, okay. I will. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Those lanes are currently impassable. Those aren't main through affairs. Those are alleyways, short little spurts in between certain areas. There's still some downed trees and lines that we're unable to access. We... I know we had put out a statement with the city earlier in the week about having those customers bring their carts out to the road.
I pulled it up online.
Aaron, while you're looking that up, let me just... And I know the other council members probably got these calls, too. Particularly the commercial, the high-youth commercial, like Chick-fil-A and ones like that, they were so appreciative of the extra effort, and they really bragged on you, and so we really just, you know, y'all have done a phenomenal job with addressing their needs, not just the residents, which is so bad with debris pickup and all of that, but the high-youth commercial that will have so much traffic and so much going on.
I'm a little worried about this week here with all this Florida traffic coming through. It's probably going to be heavy again this week as well, which is fine. We'll get through it, you know? Okay, see, he's got it back up. You can go ahead and move on to the next slide. All right. So far, this is as of yesterday. We've brought in 104 loads totaling 426 tons of yard debris. Go ahead and move on to the next one. These are the orange and red dots indicate a time on a pile. That section there would be south of 82, Monday's Route. That shows one truck did 10 loads in that area, 22 tons. That route typically, that section's usually only one load per week. So, just to give you an idea of what we're dealing with here, you can go ahead and move on to the next one. Monday's Route between 22nd and, I believe that's 12th Street, 33 loads, 121 tons. So, that kind of gives you an idea of the amount of downed trees we've had in that area. Go ahead. That's the north side. That was a really heavy-hit area, 20th through 30th, 34 loads, 160 tons. That there took us every bit of the week to get cleaned up, that section there. Now, we're into Tuesday's Route. We just finished up with that section today from the tracks to Tiff between 14th and 8th Street. We just finalized that today, so 16 loads, 50 tons. That would be the other half of Tuesday Route. Tuesday's Route's kind of spurted out throughout the outskirts of the city. You got the section from 75 to the tracks, 8th Street, all the way up to the school. Then you got Red Fox Trail, Cypress Ridge, and Lakeview or Lakewood. So, we still have Carpenter Road to complete. Now, this map here is going to show you the ones in red. You can go back. The red area is the area that's been completed on its first pass. Yellow area is what we're currently working in. Now, that section to the right, which was District 1, from 50th down to 12th Street, ESG has been working that area really heavy. I haven't had a chance to get with Michael or Adam on the sections that they've completed, but they've been working all the way through all these routes with us as we went. But they're kind of getting ahead of us now, trying to make sure all the roads are passable. That way, there's no large debris piles out on the road that would impede traffic. That was Emory after the cleanup. If anybody, you remember what it looked like prior.
That's my house. I remember.
As again, I'd like to thank everybody for all your help through all this, and I appreciate it very much.
We appreciate you, Aaron. Thank you for working so well with ESG and for all that you're doing, and thank you for this update. Did anyone have any questions of Aaron? Any potential?
I just want to tell you, great job, you know?
Appreciate it. I don't even recognize you anymore. What is this?
Makes me look about 10 years old. But, no, we appreciate you, man. I noticed a lot of work, a lot of extra work on your gas.
But that's what we're here for, you know? I really love this community, and I'm proud to be a part of it, so.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Moving on, our next items for discussion, I'll call on Rob Wilmont. He's going to cover most of these for us. Rob, you want to talk about the resolution to abandon and surplus a portion of the alley between Beach and Alder Street?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Basically, this is a very short section of the alley. It's really not an alley anymore. The adjoining property owners are the same, and so basically, what we're asking to do is abandon this alley, and that way, the adjoining landowners, which is one of the same, can basically join their properties.
Okay. All right. There's a map of that, or a survey, excuse me, of that in our packet. Does anyone have any questions on that particular alley? All right. You want to go on to Oak Ridge Lane?
Yes. Basically, this is the... Has to do with the Wawa Station on 82. And basically, what we have done is we've prepared a developmental agreement. Actually, I sent the last draft to the developer this morning, and basically, this alley, this part of Oak Ridge Lane, goes through the middle of the property, and we have, you know, utilities there, so we need to abandon the alley and then relocate the utilities. So, what we've agreed to do in the development agreement is that we will go ahead and exchange the alley, you know, and deed that over to the owner of the property. And then, in exchange for that, they will give us an easement, you know, along the side of the property. And because Oak Ridge Lane was no longer being, you know, is going to be abandoned, they will then construct a road from 11th Street north back up to Oak Ridge Lane. So, basically, we're abandoning the alley and conveying it to the owner, and then the owner is conveying back to us an easement for the utilities. And the right-of-way, a 20-foot right-of-way, I think it's about 200 feet in length, going from 11th Street up to Oak Ridge Lane, and they will be responsible for the construction of the road.
Okay. So, the utilities won't be relocated?
They will be relocated.
They'll be relocated to the new road?
Yeah. I don't know if Jessica provides you a map of that or not.
Yeah, we've got a plan.
Right. So, you'll see the Oak Ridge Lane going through the middle of the property.
Right.
It's in yellow. The new utility easement will be coming along the roadway there, and then here, and then the new road will be coming from 11th.
Right.
Back up to Oak Ridge Lane.
Is the developer paying the expense for that relocation of those utilities, or is that city?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay.
Right. So, they're covering all the relocation.
Perfect.
So, basically, it's... We're getting the better deal.
Yeah.
As far as what we're giving up and what we're getting in return.
Gotcha.
And so, the resolution is basically abandon the alley, and we'll convey it to them in exchange for what we've agreed to do in the development agreement.
Perfect. Okay. Gentlemen, any questions on that particular alley? All right. Our next item for discussion is an ordinance to establish a traffic calming program, and I've got you and Rob and Adam discussing that.
Well, I told Adam to come on up, and we'll talk about it together.
Okay.
You know, Adam and... Actually, we started this with Emily, and now Larry and Adam. And we've... This is kind of looking at a lot of different ordinances, you know, in different cities. And naturally, the intent of traffic calming devices is to slow folks down and for safety. So, one of the things that people have talked about are things such as speed bumps or speed tables. And what can happen with speed bumps or speed tables is that folks may avoid those roads and go a different way to avoid the humps and the bumps. So, you got to be... So, the idea was be careful about what you do, so you don't wind up fixing a problem in one area and then creating a problem in another. So, you can see in the ordinance, it's Section 78-162, Traffic Calming Solutions. And there's a lot of different things you can do, you know, put up, you know, road signs, you know, neighborhood education, street narrowing, traffic circles, all sorts of things you can do for traffic control measures. And of course, you know, speed tables and humps are basically part of a traffic control measure. So, only, you know, residential streets are you looking to employ those, you know, traffic humps or bumps. What we have provided for is that if somebody believes that they have a speeding problem in their neighborhood, they would make application to the Public Works Department and say, "Hey, listen, we got a problem here. You know, I want, you know, I want, see if you can do something." That application will go to Public Works, and Public Works will then make an investigation. You know, they go out on-site. They may do some speed checks to see, you know, do we have a speeding problem? And once they've had an opportunity to review the situation, then they'll make a recommendation about, okay, this is what we think would be a good measure to try to slow folks down. But in... Once that recommendation's made, it would go to the city manager, and if he approves that traffic control calming device, you know, Public Works will go ahead and do that. Now, before you get into speed humps or speed bumps, the ordinance basically provides is that you're only going to get a speed hump or a speed bump if we tried other stuff and it didn't work.
Okay.
So, if we tried, you know, a measure and it didn't seem to cure the problem, that's when you go and look, you know, some of the applicants say, "I want you to, y'all look at speed humps or speed bumps." So, there is a threshold about whether or not to put in a speed bump or a speed hump, and that's in Section 165. You know, the distance of the road has to be at least 800 feet. The volume has to be less than 1,600 vehicles per day. The posted speed limit is 30 miles per hour or less, and the speed of 30% over posted speed or 10% over 10 miles per hour over the limits. So, that's, you know, that's just kind of... And this is very similar to other cities, you know, because you don't want to have speed humps or speed bumps if it's a highly trafficked, you know, roadway, and you don't want to have speed bumps or speed humps if you really don't have a big speeding problem. So, you have that threshold. If it's determined that the proposed roadway meets that threshold, then the applicant can, you know, can then say, "I want to have speed humps." Then the applicant is required to get a petition together and get 67% of the residents whose driveways are on the road or who's... Or if they're a homeowner on an intersecting street with no other outlets. So, you got to have 67% of, you know, consensus that we want a speed hump. So, once they, you know, they file this application, it meets the threshold, there's a determination, and they meet the 67%, then we'll go ahead and implement a speed bump, probably speed humps, right, Adam?
They're interchangeable. What's not interchangeable is really two differences. You've got a speed bump or a hump, and you've got a speed table. Speed table is what you may see in like a large shopping mall, shopping center, where it's like got a crosswalk, and you kind of come up to a tabletop type thing. Speed humps, speed bumps are just what we're going to look at using are the bolt-down, heavy rubber type with the yellow striping within it, so that they are removable should they, you know, become an issue. And I think that's part of it, too, just to kind of also tie into 67% need to be on board with having them. But we have 67% on board. Because they can be liable, not much different than... We sit there, somebody hits it, damages the rim, or something like that, there's a chance that we're, you know, held liable. So, if we have to remove them, then we need the consensus to have them removed as well.
And we have in here that they got to remain for at least 12 months before you can ask them to be removed. That way, you're not taking them in and pulling them out.
Right.
And I think what Adam was telling me is that, you know, there'll be signage, you know, speed bumps.
Right. We'll have signage ahead of it. We'll probably have to have some type of signage painted onto the roadway, you know, bump ahead, you know, some type of signage. I haven't reviewed the MUTCD for all of what's... I haven't reviewed the MUTCD for all of what's required for them, but, you know, I know there's got to be high-vis striping, there's got to be, you know, different things that are, that are part of that to go in place. But keep in mind, too, there is a list of things that we need to hit before we get to that point. You know, we may, it may be a 40 mile an hour road, we may say, well, let's drop it 35. Does that fix it? Let's drop it 30, does that fix it? Let's put, you know, children at play signs, let's put, let's stripe the road because maybe it doesn't have edge striping, and when you confine to a, a smaller area, you know, which is, you know, you know, taking two foot off of that edge of road and putting you in a 12-foot lane, you tend to slow down because you're trying to keep it in between a smaller area. So there's a lot of things that can be done ahead of it, including a police presence, things like that, some enforcement, that kind of stuff. But I think Hyman's already, I don't know if you've already got some, but we were talking about some signs that, that you kind of place on the speed limit sign that tells you how fast you are going.
Right.
Do you have? You don't have yet. We're, we're looking at getting some of those that, so that it'll be a visual. If you see 35 and you're, you know, going 37, or you're going 47, it'll tell you what's your com, you know, on your approach. But that also logs, so it tells us time, location, and the ones we're looking at getting, shoot that to a cloud, so it's really immediate information. So we can log that, we can log it over a period of time, let's say we do 24 hours. Now we see what, realistically, what we're looking at. We see speeders between 7:30 and 8 o'clock trying to get to work or school, you know, we see some at 2 o'clock in the morning because they're out playing, driving around, just, you know, having a good time. Whatever the case may be, that may help the enforcement piece, but it also may show that there's a need, it may show that there's not, but those things, you know, all those things kind of build up to the point of speed humps. But we need to get those in place prior to just throwing speed humps anywhere.
Yeah, I think that's, that was one of our main things, is that, you know, there can be issues with speed humps or speed tables from potential liability standpoint. And so you really want to exhaust, you know, other means if you can, you know, to prevent having to install those. But it's Adam was saying.
That's why we dropped it, that's why most people have it at that 30 mile an hour mark, because at 30 miles an hour, you, you have time to slow down before crossing them. If you were to throw them out on a 45 mile an hour road, that's, that's too much speed to be hitting one of those at-
And if they're going 45 and a 30, then-
Right.
-you know, good luck suing us.
Yeah.
Right.
So anyway, that, that's kind of the long and short of it, you know, in Adam's my talk last week. Again, we think we've got this right, but we wanted to go ahead and get it presented tonight, you know, so y'all have a chance to look at it. If you have any other ideas that you think would, would be helpful, you know, shoot me an email or a text, and, you know, we'll certainly take a look at it. Because actually, this has been a, been a work in progress for a while, and I think we finally got a pretty good draft, and I think we're pretty, we're good to go with it.
Yeah, I feel, I feel pretty good about it, actually. You know, there, there may be room for improvement, and it may be something that's fluid that we look at, you know, next year and say, you know, this, this part isn't working, let's, let's, you know, but, you know, as are ordinances, you know, some things you need to look at from time to time.
Yeah, I think this came up part of Armored Road for me. I've had, literally yesterday, the person that came, came back again and asked like, what's going on with our speed bump or our slowdown? We just had another incident where a child likely got hit, somebody lost control on that road, somebody likely got hit. So I'm really concerned about the timeframe of this thing, because that, I mean, that person has actually showed up to meetings twice, called me, and I mean, I got messages on my phone literally from today, asking about that, concerned citizens, that asked us multiple times about it. And I know we've done at least two different things out there already, and they were not really, I guess they didn't work very well. So I'm really concerned about it, because, you know, I don't know what's-
Well, I think we can, you know, actually, the reason why I wanted to go ahead and get this on the gen tonight, so we could workshop it.
Yeah.
If everybody was good with it, then we're ready to go with it, you know, with regular meeting to adopt it.
Yeah, and I, I just want to be able to get that information to them, because I know they already had one petition going, uh, already, signed with people, and he was saying, if I need to get another one, I will. So these numbers and things I'm seeing, you know, I don't know if he knew, if it's going to, if this is going to pass like it is, you know, he needs certain percentages and that type of deal, I need to be able to relay that message, um, in a timely manner. But, um, like I say, it's a, it's a concern that, you know, that's a, I know that's a passing wave for all our utilities and different trucks, trucks like that, and we just don't want any of our people to be in that type of situation because the, you know, the, I guess, lawsuit or anything could be double time of what we're looking at, you know?
And I think one of the things that, you know, what we can, you know, ask, you know, Adam and maybe the city staff to do is go ahead, because we're going to need to develop the, you know, the application, you know, for a traffic calming device, and, you know, and develop the petition, you know, for, you know, speed humps. So maybe between now and, you know, next meeting, we can go ahead and get those, those forms drafted, so we're good to go as soon as we adopt the ordinance.
How long does it take to get, once you go through this, and we'll try to do everything to expedite that, because it's already, it's already in the works, like you said-
Yeah, yeah.
-we've done several of the things, they've got a petition. How long does it take, once you get all that, to get the actual speed bumps and get them installed? Do we have them already installed?
I have them, I have them in the warehouse.
Okay, so they're ready to go?
Yeah, I got, I got, I got a pallet of them sitting in the warehouse now. We went ahead and ordered them ahead of this, just so that we were prepared, day one, to be able to start doing this.
You know, I was thinking that if other measures have already been employed and didn't work-
DNA.
-then maybe you're already to the point-
It may be.
-of looking at-
We'd have to do the, we need to get the cameras up, verify that they're actually speeding, um, and do a, and do a, a count-
Right.
-and that kind of stuff, to have, you know, that data to say that it checks the boxes.
Can you go ahead and do that now, though?
Yeah, we can, we can-
Can you go ahead and do that?
Because they can possibly start-
There are several that are similar to that fashion on Armored Road as well.
What, what's, what's the speed level on Armored Road?
30.
It is 30?
It was 35, we dropped it to 30.
Okay.
And we put out the truncated domes on the edge and center with a, uh, slow piece down. We've done, we've done a couple of things to, to get it pretty close to what these requirements will be. Just need to make sure we, I don't want to jump the gun and miss a few steps, you know, even though we're trying to get this done quickly, but I think we can, we can get the process rolling.
Okay.
I don't see an issue with that. We have been dragging our feet on this. I've came on-
Yeah.
-as actually city manager, and then Lester managed, asked about some, taking up some speed bumps, so we'd had nothing to really guide us on that, and that's when I started to work with Rob and Adam, and we've got something where we can handle both those situations. So it's not that we're dragging our feet, it takes a while to get all this wording right, uh, so we are going to take care of those, so.
Yeah, and, and just to, just to kind of clarify, too, where we pulled a lot of this information from, um, most of them, the community is, is paying for. We're trying not to do that here, they're doing special tax districts, they're doing, um, you know, sign, whoever signs the petitions are the ones that have to ante up the cost of installation, that kind of stuff. We're trying not to do that here either, so that's, you know, that, that's another piece of it that, to understand is that's a general fund, this is going to be funded through the general fund.
Sure.
So that's kind of why we really step back and try to look at what really fits our system, and, and make sure we were all comfortable with, with the criteria, but not having to put that burden on our citizens.
Right.
Right.
Quick question for you, looking through the list of traffic calming solutions, what is a median choker? What is that?
So basically, um, you can do a couple of things. It's either putting a median in the middle of the roadway to, to narrow it the roadway-
Right.
-or if you're, it, it could be just striping, like, like-
Okay.
-take for instance, 8th Street.
Uh-huh.
Um, everybody knows 8th Street used to be 54-foot wide or whatever it was, and with just a center yellow stripe. When we put the white stripes in at, I think it was 14 feet wide lanes, it, it really did slow people down.
Okay.
As weird as it sounds, but they're confined now to-
But that's what that is.
-14-foot instead of 25-foot.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of what that is, is choking the traffic down to a defined area.
I got you, okay. I'm not sure about that. All right, any other questions? Comments? All right, thank you for the support on this, we appreciate y'all doing that, it's something, something we need to, to certainly address. So y'all review everything, if you see anything after looking at it, any changes or suggestions, just get with Rob, and we can, we can address that before we vote it on the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that concludes our city council workshop, and now I'm going to call to order the special call meeting. So we have just a few things that we need to discuss on this, mainly the consideration on the action on the alcohol license hearings that were held on September 16th. But the first thing we need to address, under old business, we talked about this at the last meeting and postponed to this meeting, but it was the RFP for the janitorial services, and there are still some questions. And so I've been asked by the council if we could postpone this one more time to, to get some more answers to what's going on with that janitorial service. So, um, I guess what, do y'all want to postpone until the next meeting?
Yeah.
The next regular meeting?
Before, before, well, I was going to say that we have a discussion tonight.
We could. Sure we could, yeah, absolutely. And go ahead and throw the questions, oh, my friend, go ahead and throw those questions out there so we can get those to Morgan and Josh.
Sure. Well, my question is, of course, you know, I appreciate the committee for, for meeting with all these folks and going over everything. I'm not too certain on the formula that was used to get the total points. However, I see the committee has recommended we go with American Facility Services, which they come in at a monthly cost of $5,950, which yearly that would be $71,400. And the committee's put ICS second, which comes in at $4,400 a month, which is $52,800. So if we went with ICS, who the committee recommended was the second, you're looking at $18,600 savings a year. Now furthermore, with Superior Cleaning Service, who has the contract currently, they come in at $5,900, which that would be $70,800 a year. Now I realize that it would be $50 less than American Facility Services, however, I was told, and if I'm wrong, please somebody correct me, that the city would have to cover their cleaning supplies, that they, they don't, they don't supply those, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What, what was the difference between American Facility Services and ICS? You know, one being, uh, American Facility was 324 points, ICS being 305, what was the difference between those?
They're in Atlanta. Yeah, they're in Atlanta, just, just like American Facility.
Yeah. They have a separate, but they also have a high school.
Okay. Okay. Um, so Superior Cleaning Services, they are based out of Tiff County, correct? Tiff County, no? Where, where she based that up? Savannah? And that's the one that currently has the contract, right? They set Savannah? Okay. But ICS, overall, though, that's who you guys put the number two for the, even though she wasn't willing to answer some questions, RB?
Hendrick's Cleaning Services, who's, who's based out of Tiff?
MJ, did you have a question?
Um, I was trying to see, what was the reasoning of trying to get a new janitorial service? Was there something going on? Was anything documented, anything like that, something going on to bring in janitor services that would be with them and ask them to improve, or? Oh, all right, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going up.
I apologize.
Oh.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just so we can, we can all hear.
Yeah, we have had plenty of conversations with our parents.
Janitorial Services, many of sit downs with the owner as well as the workers with those issues. She's also come in and found some of those issues herself, as far as running her hand across stuff, have some issues here that you can see yourself, but we have had those conversations, I have those text messages with those issues as well.
Did you provide that for us to be able to see?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would like to see those things.
Sure.
Um-
Because she also has recommendations.
She has recommendations?
Yeah.
Yeah, from several, um, department heads, and I have a copy of them that I can pass out to everybody, so they can see. So it's over the course of the past two years that I've, that I've saw, so, um, from recent as July of this year to two years ago in June 2022. So, so that's why I was wondering, even though with them having recommendations, at what point did you guys start having problems?
Um, it's been a while, it's been a while, and it's been where they were changing, they changed around some of the people that actually come in. We had to request some of the people to be changed, especially in our police department, given background history and things like that. So we've been trying to work through it a lot. It got to a point where it just wasn't being done. We have reports of supplies going missing, had a gentleman today make that same comment, supplies being placed in a vehicle, things of sorts. So it hasn't just started over the last few months.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
So we're going to postpone it, or?
Well, it doesn't sound like that the council wants to vote on it tonight, so I think everybody wanted to see the, you know, the information that you've got.
Yes.
So, um, so we would need to postpone it, I guess, until the next, till our next regular meeting, should be enough time. Will that give you enough time to get those out to everybody?
Perfect, fine.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
So, um, so I'll need a motion to postpone to the next regular-
I can make a motion to postpone to the next, if you have any.
Okay, so I have a motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, if that carries. All right, under new business, um, we do have, um, to consider the action on alcohol license hearings that were held here on September the 16th, and that's for Pepe's Food Mart on 20th, El Matate Restaurant on Second, and Spigo Number One on Wyden Mill Road. So we will need to take those individually. I'm going to ask Elizabeth if she will just kind of remind us of what the guidelines are that we're to operate in, and then if y'all have any questions before we bring each of these up, I know she'll be happy to answer those.
Our ordinance has a guideline for our alcohol license violations, but one thing to emphasize is that these are guidelines and-
Elizabeth, you may need to move Rob's microphone over so we can hear you a little bit, so it picks up on the-
I'm taking over your job.
All right.
Um, but in our ordinance, it says it emphasizes that these are guidelines only and can be altered based upon the facts of any individual case. So these are just guidelines provided in our code of ordinances. The first offense within two years, the guideline is a 30-day suspension and a $150 reinstatement fee. The second offense within the past two years is a 90-day suspension and a $250 reinstatement fee. The second offense within the past 12 months, the guideline is revocation. And the third offense within the past two years, the guideline is revocation. And just as a reminder, Pepe's, this is their first offense since 2020, so this is their first offense within the past two years. Both El Matate and Spigo Number One had a, uh, prior violation in September of 2023, so just about six months prior to this most recent violation.
One thing I might add, according to law code of ordinances-
According to code of ordinances, there is a general penalty for violations of the, of any provisions of, of our code, which is a $1,000 fine or six months in imprisonment. So when we assessed a $1,000 fine previously on the first offenders some time back, that's the code section we're using. We went to the general penalty phase to assess the fines. So you have the general penalty, you know, uh, in the code of a $1,000 fine, six months in jail, and you also have the ability to look at these, you know, issues as far as- as suspensions or revocations. So again, as Elizabeth was saying, these are guidelines only. It's really, you know, you've heard the evidence, you can kind of just use your own discretion as far as what you might think is appropriate as to each, each facility.
Okay. All right. Any questions on procedures and guidelines before we start discussing?
Typically, when they, we, you legitimately do the ninety days, is there a fine that goes along with the ninety days?
You.
Well, when I say typically, this is the first time we've had an assessment within the time of surprise our looking, so we don't want to have a typical situation. But by the guidelines, by God number five, the authority can impose a fine.
Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and, and start addressing these. The first one, like I said, is Pepe's Food Mart located at nine-twenty-one West Twentieth Street for underage sales violation. As Elizabeth mentioned, this is their first offense in two years since, since that previous offense. So I'll open the floor up for discussion recommendation on how the council would like to address Pepe's Food Mart.
I make a motion for Pepe's that we impose a thousand-dollar fine.
Okay.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Question that I posed to Rob earlier today before I call for the vote, the other thing that I asked about in addition to this was that the offender should cover the court cost that are, and the time for the attorneys to review this and address this. That shouldn't just come out of the general fund. So this could be, these could, the fine would also include, or was that just for the recommendations for Brent?
Because these were, did not go before the hearing officer.
Okay.
I don't think court costs would be appropriate at this point.
Okay, gotcha, okay. All right, so we'll get to that. All right, so we have a motion for a thousand-dollar fine for Pepe's and a second. Is there any further discussion, any other questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So that does carry. And remind us, Elizabeth, how will they be notified about this?
We'll send them a letter and the way it's worked in the past and how it's gonna be working with the entities that went in front of Judge Hyde is that they have to pay that fine before they get their license renewal for next year.
Okay.
But they'll get a letter explaining all of that to them.
Okay. All right, the next item, excuse me, the next business we need to discuss is El Matate Mexican Restaurant at ten-twenty-one West Second Street, also for underage sales violation. And just to remind you, as Elizabeth noted, this is their second offense within about a six-month and a few days period, but certainly less than a year. So I'll open the floor up for discussion on El Matate.
Mayor, when I talked to everybody, El Matate was the only one that said they didn't get rid of the employee, but that they promoted the employee to manage.
Right.
This has been an ongoing problem, as we can see. I'd like to make a motion for a thousand-dollar fine as well as a forty-five-day suspension on all our alcohol sales.
Okay, at El Matate, okay. All right, so we have a motion is for a thousand-dollar fine and a forty-to-five-day suspension of their sales. Alcohol sales is their second.
I want, I want to see if we can amend it and make it ninety days.
Okay. Do you want to amend it to ninety, or if someone wants to second it, and then we can, if you don't second that motion, it, it will die, obviously, and then you could make a motion for ninety?
Well, it was just on the discussion.
Okay, yeah. Oh, okay, well, we, we got it to get to discussion. Somebody needs a second. Yeah. Just.
To amend the motion to ninety days.
Okay. Okay. So you want to do that?
No, I don't remember.
Okay, let's go, let's get a second, and then let's discuss it. Let's do that. I think that's a little bit cleaner. And then we can always come back and amend it after that. So if someone doesn't mind seconding, okay, let's do it. Now, now let's discuss and see what the rest of the council members feel about ninety days versus forty-five days.
Um, we have to make an example out of it, for sure, because this is an ongoing problem. And however, though, I do understand that, you know, this is a business in our town, and they will be affected by that, as they should. I think forty-five days would be sufficient enough, but if any of my colleagues feel differently, then I'm open to hear how you guys feel as well.
Um, I have a question of our attorney. If they are found, let's say we go with the forty-five days or the ninety days, either one, and they're found to have a third violation within a short period of time like they've done with this, that's revocation, is that correct? Is that, based on what the guidelines are saying?
They have one, but third is a two-year time.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I know it's, it's very serious, but there is that, that option too, so.
I'm good with forty-five.
You're good with forty-five? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for forty-five. Is, is any other questions or discussion? All right, so for El Matate, the forty-five-day suspension and the thousand-dollar fine, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. All right, our final one on this list is Spigo Number One at nineteen-thirty-nine Witten Mill Road, also some underage sales violation. This is their second, also their second offense within a, about a six-month period. So I'll open the floor up for discussion on how you'd like to address that.
Definitely make a motion for a thousand-dollar fine and a forty-five day as well.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second, also to impose the forty-five-day suspension for alcohol sales and the thousand-dollar fine. Is there any further discussion or any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Then the next thing we have is the recommendation from the hearing officer, Brent Hyde, on alcohol beverage violations, and all of those are in your packet that you can see. It goes into specifics about when the, the hearing took place and that kind of thing. And Brent has basically recommended the thousand-dollar fine for all of those businesses that have, have been in violation as a first offender. So if you have, if you're in agreement with that, then I'll need a motion to, to accept his recommendation, and that's where the, plus the court cost would come in.
I did look at our ordinance for that. We are, we have the authority to impose an amount of up to a hundred-and-fifty dollars in court costs against every person or entity. So that, that's the max court cost we'd be able to apply to each one.
So what, I can't make a motion, as you know, but what I would recommend is y'all consider the thousand dollars plus the maximum of the hundred-and-fifty so that the taxpayers of this community aren't paying for those hearings.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion for a thousand-dollar fine for each of those facilities and paying up to the maximum fine for the court cost.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or any questions?
Oh, I just can't say something about, I just want to say that, you know, Tipton is, we just recently voted in alcohol sales liquor stores, and definitely, just like Josh said, we want these businesses to thrive and be great at what they do and what they sell. But, I mean, we got a community of youth and just people in general, adults as well, to take care of, and we're putting everybody at danger. And these are underage kids, these are somebody's children. So, you know, when those businesses get these, get these reports from whoever's gonna hand them out, just please reiterate that we want them to thrive, but we're not gonna play the, let's make all the money we can regardless of who it is, put everybody in danger in Tipton. That, that, that's not a cool thing to do.
Right. I think we would all agree with that, MJ. Thank you for that. All right, did I call for the vote?
I don't believe.
Did we vote on that?
Yeah, we have to.
Motion second.
Okay, okay. All right, so all of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Going on to other business, Larry, I know you sent us out a very detailed city manager report last week. Any highlights you want to talk about?
Yeah, well, I'll just go over a few of those details, but first I just want to carry on from what Aaron stated. You know, our management team and employees and ESG employees and Andrew Island have been amazing in this recovery from this hurricane. I just want to thank them. We've got all the streets opened and cleared except for a few alleys, as Aaron noted. Georgia Power has all the power restored except for thirty residents where they have damage and they can't turn the power back on until they get the repairs done. So we've made a very good recovery. We had three lift stations down after the storm, and we've got those back up and running. All the water wells are up and running, so we're getting pretty much back to somewhat normal, if you want to call that normal. But Fullwood Park was hit pretty good with like twenty-five, thirty trees down, and I want to thank the fire, they got the chainsaw down, while everybody was working on the streets and some stations and lift stations and everything, they were out there cutting up trees at Fullwood Park and so that make it easier for ESG to get in there and clean it up. But Fullwood Park will be closed the remainder of this week, and hopefully we can get it back up next Monday, but we'll make an assessment later on in the week as to how that cleanup is going, so, but everything's moving along well. We've reached out into other communities helping them. The fire department went to Valdosta and Lounts County for three days with the chainsaws, helping them clear roads. The fire department went over to Douglas and helped keep the streets calm. Over in Douglas, they had some problems there. Let's see, what else would we have here? ESG has loaned equipment to Nashville and Lapa Hah, so we've reached out all into these other areas and helping them. So we'll continue to help them in their cleanup efforts also, so they were hit pretty hard east of us and south of us. With the Milton, the Milton Hurricane approaching, I've, I've heard a word that they're opening shelters in Albany, Columbus, Atlanta, and Moultrie, so we can get the word out on that. Let's see, projects that we're doing, L-Meg twenty-three, we'll be finishing up central paving it this week, and next week we'll get to Tiff, and hopefully we can finish up on L-Meg twenty-three.
Good.
And we've already started on L-Meg twenty-four. Stacy Watkins has already got the engineering done, and we'll be getting the bids out. That's another eight-point-five miles of paving that we'll be doing over the next few months, so we'll be jumping on that. Commerce Way and Goodrich Alley, we pretty much completed that except for, in the alley, there's a few drainage and paving issues that we gotta straighten up before we can get that completed. The Fullwood bathrooms renovation were put on hold from the storm, so we've got back on that this week. Playground, new playground equipment should be arriving next month. On our ARPA projects, we've got four projects there that we're just starting on. The Agarama Lift Station, Magnolia Ditch and Drainage, wastewater blower replacements and lift station bypass pump. So that's about five-and-a-half million dollars in projects on, on those ARPA projects, which the grant money will cover two-point-nine million dollars of that. So that'll finish up the grant money there once we get through with those four projects. Let's see, TIA projects, we've got three TIA projects that Stacy is working on. The Eighteenth Street Bridge, McCormick Drive widening, Twelfth, Twelfth Street at Prince Intersection Improvement. That's about seven-and-a-half million dollars in TIA projects that we have coming up, so we've got a lot of projects in the works.
We do.
Another one that we've been working on, this is something nationwide, lead service line inventory, where every service line has to be inventoried and checked for lead and copper, and we're forty-two percent completed on that. We have not found any lead, and we do not anticipate finding any lead, but we'll have to send a notice out next week just advising the residents of the progress on that, but we don't anticipate any problems there, so we just need to finish up that project. And along with that, we're finished up on the GIS mapping of the water, sewer, and gas lines along with that. Coming events, we got Second Saturday on Main Street this Saturday, and then later on this month, we got Fright Night in Fullwood. It's a movie from five to nine in Fullwood Park. And then Trick or Treat Downtown is October thirty-first from five to six P.M. And good news on the farmer's market, they were so successful this past Saturday, they're gonna have it every Saturday in October and November, so that's gonna be a, a good addition for Tiff Gardens Downtown, and that'll be nine to twelve every Saturday in October and November. Also, I want to thank Hillary and Jocelyn for volunteering to clean up the theater. The theater was in a complete wreck, and they jumped in there and volunteered to clean it up. They spent two days over there with four men from ESG just hauling off trash and junk, so, so it's back to normal. So along with that, we're looking for a new theater director and a URA director, so we'll continue searching for those, and we've got some, several possibilities on those, so hopefully we'll get those two positions filled.
Excellent. Good report. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I have a question. As far as the, the theater is concerned, some people were asking about the salary, so I directed them to contact you on that, so.
Okay.
All right. No, that was the right thing to do, because I had no clue.
Yeah, we, you just posted that, so get those applications in.
Okay.
We've already got two, I think, in, so more the merrier.
All right.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions, comments, Larry, before? All right, we'll close out with mayor and council comments. We don't need executive session this evening for anything, do we? Anybody want to go first?
No, just want to say thank you again, all, ESG and, and Lees and Fire and everybody during this storm. I know everybody is at a hard time where it'd be lights off, trees down, whatever it may be, but everybody stepped up and helped, not just here in Tipton, but also in these surrounding counties that are hurting. So if it's anything you can do or, you know, want to do, in your heart, help somebody somewhere, but we're just blessed to have what we had to happen and, you know, hopefully, you know, bounce back here with the good help that everybody's doing. We just thank everybody that stepped up to do that, and congratulations to Hillary on another situation downtown with the farmer's market and the job, but other than that, I'm good.
All right.
Yeah, I agree with MJ wholeheartedly. I mean, thanks to ESG, Fire, Lees, I don't know how many traffic lights were out throughout town, and I know they were trying to be a lot of places at one time, that's hard to do. Thank you a lot, Larry and Jessica, for updating us with the streets are closed, you know, how we need to move about the city. Once again, if, if you know of anybody that just needs help in any kind of way, please, you know, help them any way you can, and please remember those are neighboring state as well they're about to face the other hurricane coming.
Yeah, I just want to echo what they said. Thank you to the community. I want to specifically thank Carpen Road Church of God. They are still feeding communities in the local area, Tipton. The last two they did was Pearson, Willicootie. Today they did Sparks, and so they're continuing to feed communities that power is out and that, even though some of the powers come back on, a lot of people lost a lot of food that's extremely expensive. So I just want to ask everyone to continue to try to work with the churches, because a lot of people are calling churches for help, so if you can donate food, clothing or anything, just reach out to your local church, and let's continue trying to help everybody that was hit pretty hard by the hurricane. That's it for me.
Michael, you got anything?
Pretty much the same thing. The only, the only thing I have to add is, the day after the storm on my street, the, the contractors, the, the power contractor that was there, I was talking with him, they're from Missouri, and I guess it was Friday afternoon I talked to him, maybe Saturday, I can't remember the days run together, but anyway, I was talking with him, and we were just, we were just chatting, and he, he said that he'd been doing this, this storm work for twenty, I think he said twenty-four years, and he just said that our city was to be commended how friendly everybody was, but more importantly, he said, I've never, I've never seen public works, police, fire, just jump in there and just go to work like they were doing. He said, you know, usually we're fighting through traffic, fighting through people, and he said, you know, we're just, and he said, it's a tough job, and we're, we're, we're maneuvering through the city very well, and so just kudos to everybody involved.
Especially those linemen. They, all of them were incredible.
They, they were wonderful.
Yeah, especially, and Adale was down a couple of days, they had like three crews working, three to six crews were working to get their electricity back on in Adale, so I got to see those guys in action. It was extraordinary.
Pretty impressive what they do, and they're there that quick, too.
Yeah.
All right, I will wrap things up. I wanted to share with y'all that I had the opportunity to go to Athens yesterday to be part of the Community Development Block Grant Program that the state is putting on, and we got an unsolicited pat on the back from Deputy Commissioner Rusty Haygood, who said that really bragged on Tipton for the work that's being done in the URA, and, and Larry, I'm going to need a deposit ticket for the city of Tipton because I came back with a little something, something.
Aye.
And it was a check.
Ooh.
Seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars.
Oh, wow.
That we will be costing into the city of Tifton, uh, checking account. And we will be using this nearly eight hundred thousand dollars to help more people renovate their homes in the U R A. So that's, that's always exciting, but they had nothing but good things to say about Tifton and how impressed they have been with the work that's being done. And they used us as the example and said it only takes a spark of vision to start something that really will change a community. And, uh, so I was very proud to be there to represent Tifton, to bring that check back. Um, there's a group of us that are going on Thursday, uh, Tifton's receiving another award for our U R A. So we'll save the details about that to the next meeting. But, um, just thank you, Tifton, for being such good neighbors during the storm, uh, like the, the, my, my colleagues have addressed. Thank you for getting out there and helping people and feeding people and delivering water and just, just a phone call to say. And I can't tell you, we had so many calls from all over the state. How's Tifton? Do y'all need anything? Is there anything we can do? And so those relationships that we've developed with our communities, uh, all around this state, this great state, have, have really, um, they've really meant a lot to me personally. And not only that, but being able to make those calls to the communities that you mentioned, that you need anything, we're here and, and we were, and they are so thankful for that. So, uh, we were very blessed, um, to get through this event, uh, with no worse damage than we had. And, um, we need to continue to help our neighbors. Is there any other business to come before the city council this evening? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.